Good evening, everyone. Thanks for your patience. We all call this meeting to order now of the February 8th North Liberty City Council meeting. Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Harrington?
Here.
Sittig?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Wason?
Here.
Thank you. Item three is the approval of the agenda. As you know, what was item 12 has been removed from the agenda, but I don't think there have been any other modifications to it. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. I get a motion for, uh, motion for that, please.
I'll move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item four is consent agenda. Uh, are there any items on there that you want to pull out to discuss individually? All right, motion to, uh, motion for that one, please.
I'll move that, Mayor.
Thank you.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, thank you. Item five is public comment. Uh, this is time for anyone that has an item they wanted to bring to the council's attention that's not already on the agenda. Anyone has any comments for us? Let's know. Going once, going twice, closing public comment. Item six, city engineer report, Kevin.
Great, thank you. Few updates on projects. Ranshaw Way, Phase Five, so not a whole lot of work is going on, but the electrical subcontractor did come in and he set all of the, uh, streetlight bases and the streetlight poles. Those are up now. Centennial Park Loop Road, nothing's really going on there. Just a reminder of the remaining work for 2022 is the final grading, permanent seating, landscaping, mulching, and plantings. And the substantial completion date on that is May 6th. Uh, Dubuque Street Phase One project, um, we have received all the contract documents back from All American Concrete. Their late start date for the project is March 28th. And, uh, I talked to the contractor today. They have put together preliminary schedule and that, right now, they're showing that as their start date, March 28th. Uh, he did mention that if, if we have a really mild march, they could potentially start a week or two prior to that. I guess related to that is we are planning on having one more sort of neighborhood meeting for the nearby property owners. Um, sometime in between the pre-construction meeting and, and when the construction actually starts. So we'll have some hopefully good information to share with all the property owners uh, who are directly impacted by the project. And that would also include the school. Pool heater replacement, uh, so the indoor pool was reopened December 13th and we're currently waiting on a second heat exchanger for the outdoor pool before that project can close up. And that's expected to be completed before the pool opens. So sometime before May is the target. Uh, City Hall, we have a project update for everyone tonight. And then lastly, I almost forgot about Jones Boulevard. Uh, so Jones Boulevard, we've been spending a lot of time on that one. It's a very tight, uh, design schedule. Uh, yesterday, we just made the 70% complete submittal to city staff. And then we have a meeting scheduled for, uh, Monday, Valentine's Day, for a, um, staff review meeting on that project. And that's all I have tonight unless you have questions.
Any questions for Kevin? You good, Brian?
All right.
Thank you, Kevin. Item seven, city administrator report, Ryan.
Yeah, just a few things for me and just to follow up on Kevin's report. Also on Valentine's Day, the building, uh, that the chiropractor, vet, and beauty shop occupied will be torn down. So the, the excavator will be in on the, on the 14th and I suspect it won't take but a day or two to, to have that down. Uh, so we are excited and, and getting ready for that project. Uh, we found out today, uh, that the North Liberty leader after this week will no longer be, uh, uh, in operation. Uh, and so, in addition to the loss to the community, we also have to find out where we're gonna, uh, publish our public notices and things of that nature. So Tracy's been working with, uh, the Gazette and the, uh, Press Citizen to learn more about, uh, options there. Be talking with the mayor about it later this week. And we'll get back to you, uh, on that most likely. I believe it has to, it will come in front of this group for some sort of confirmation, uh, once we're at that point. Uh, in the meantime, we're gonna, we're gonna use the Gazette, uh, on an emergency type basis until this group will make a decision. And then lastly, uh, wanted to let this group know that we, uh, Tracy and I will be meeting with the housing, excuse me, the Housing Trust Fund, uh, I believe next week to talk a little bit more about what a, an affordable housing program would look like in North Liberty, uh, with the use of ARP funds. This was a, a project that was identified as a, uh, had some interest, uh, from this group, uh, to, to spend ARP money on. So we'll be, uh, bringing back some options for you to discuss, uh, here in the next month or so. That's my report this evening, Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, I've got a number of things here. I'm adding one more thing to the agenda tonight that I'd like to do ongoing is to allow the counselors to have an opportunity to talk about things that they're doing on behalf of the city, um, like running around Liberty Center Pond eight times, 11 times. Um, and also calendar events that they can share with us as well. So, uh, I won't go into, uh, much, um, congratulations on the Beat the Bitter, other than to say thank you to Jillian and Guy specifically for all of their work. Uh, we got an email that was shared, uh, from a member of the public, actually not even in North Liberty, uh, in recognition of that. So, I'll, I'll stop with that. Um, we have a special election, uh, to fill a council vacancy seat, uh, that any member of the public can get petitions signed and have those submitted to the Johnson County Auditor's Office by next Friday, February 18th. Uh, Election Day is gonna be Tuesday then, March 15th, at the North Liberty Rec Center. Uh, I'll mention this, uh, the meetings we have between now and then again, but everybody will vote at the North Liberty Rec Center, uh, between 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM that day. As a reminder, and I'll continue to say this as well, um, if you haven't yet, stop out at northlibertyiowa.org and check out the connected to tomorrow, um, page. It gets fuller and fuller. So if you've been there, if you were there two weeks ago, there's new data and new information out there. So continue to, uh, keep tabs on that. And Ross, thanks for keeping that fresh and, um, keeping that full of information out there. I have kind of a fun thing, uh, I'll, I'll end with here, uh, as a, in a proclamation. This might be the biggest piece of paper I've ever had for a proclamation I've ever seen. It's kind of fun. You'll see what I'm talking about here in just a moment. It wasn't in your packet, but it's kind of a surprise, uh, for you, so. It's entitled Wrestling Appreciation Day. Whereas the city of North Liberty and the surrounding area is the premier destination for all forms of competitive wrestling in the United States for athletes and spectators alike. And whereas the University of Iowa's athletics program are an important component of the city's civics pride and can spark positive opportunities for shared town gown, community building. And whereas the university's wrestling team has had an extraordinarily positive impact upon the community, earning 24 NCAA national championships and six national runners-up and 85 individual national champions. And whereas the university is the first Power Five conference school to form a women's wrestling program, further establishing our community as a place of equal opportunity. And whereas the greater community has supported major wrestling events, including but not limited to the 2012 U.S. Olympic Wrestling Trials, the Grapple on the Gridiron in 2015, which attracted a world record crowd of 42,287 fans in Kinnick Stadium, the 2016 U.S. Olympic Trials, the 2018 UWW Freestyle World Cup, the 2021 and 2022 Iowa Girls High School State Wrestling Tournament, and the upcoming 2022 UWW Freestyle World Cup in December 2022, which for the first time will include men and women competing on the same stage. And whereas the greater community is unofficially the world record holder for the loudest simultaneous exclamation of the word "two", T-W-O, when a wrestler earns a two-point takedown inside Carver Hawkeye Arena, therefore making this day the most appropriate day possible for this official proclamation. Now therefore, uh, the city of North Liberty, Dubai proclaim at 2:22 PM on February 22nd, 2022, 2-2-2-2, to be Wrestling Appreciation Day in North Liberty. It was a fun thing that the CDB asked us to do and I don't know more detail. I'm on that board and I still don't know what they're gonna do on 2-2-2. So we'll find out, uh, on that day, so.
That's fantastic.
That was pretty cool. That's all I have, you guys. Um, I'll pass it over to you now. Um, anything that you want to share about the last, uh, couple of weeks or what you know coming up? In no particular order, don't jump all at once.
Talk about Beat the Bitter.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, so Counselor Sittig, uh, I recognized him. The mayor was present as well, uh, along with a lot of, uh, of other city staff at the 5K, uh, on that Friday evening of Beat the Bitter. And, uh, well attended, it was, it was great. The weather was perfect, the wind died down just, uh, just as we were kicking. And I felt really good about myself until about the fourth lap and we were half done. And then, uh, it, uh, reminded me that, um, you know, I have a little bit of work to do. Uh, but did finish and, uh, I, I too, Mayor, want to thank Jillian. She was sharing some stories of, of work that she began clear back in May and June, uh, of last year in, in prepping the park and, uh, going out and checking electrical outlets and, and all of those things, working with parks to make that happen, uh, that went into that prior to just, uh, setting up the light displays. So, uh, appreciate the, the work, um, that all the city staff did and, and I had a blast.
Yeah, I did too. It was a great event. I didn't make it out on Sunday, but I hear that was really good as well. You know, the, the 5K-ish run was great, eight times around the, the pond. I've never done that many times, but, um, it, it didn't get old. And, uh, stuck around a little bit for, for the walk afterwards. Cheered on some, some young neighbors who were walking around the pond. They were having a great time. So, uh, it was a great atmosphere and next year I hope they do it again and more people will show up.
Brian?
So, and the fireworks were, uh, really quite spectacular, I thought, especially in, you know, the time of the year. And they actually moved them to the center and I thought that was kind of cool because you could actually kind of watch them taking off and, and everything. And actually got a lot of comments from people that they actually enjoyed the fireworks and, but they really liked the ice sculptures too. We got a couple of pictures, uh, out on the internet that I took, uh, from them and people thought it was pretty cool looking. Uh, I think since we were here last, we had an MPO meeting. And, uh, a lot of that was, uh, working on setting the budget and stuff. Uh, one of the things that did come out of it is there may be a little bit of extra money uh, coming from some of the infrastructure, uh, bill. So we'll stay tuned to that, which would be helpful. And there was some discussion about, uh, transit between North Liberty and then downtown Iowa City on the old, um, crandic or, uh, train tracks. And, uh, it seems like the railroad is no longer interested in being quite as involved as they had anticipated initially. Uh, but we're still, uh, willing to let people look into other options to use that as a transit area. So, um, they're gonna continue to look at a few ideas and trying to come up with some practical thoughts about that to see if when or not it would work and kind of go from, uh, there. And the EMA, Emergency Management, also met. They'd, uh, set the budget for the year, which was published yesterday. And then, uh, it's fairly, fairly flat, just basically went up a little bit due to, uh, costs of health insurance and, and employee salaries. Uh, one of the, uh, nifty things is the, they renovated the old rescue truck and made that the dive team truck. And that's back in, in service and, uh, they're quite happy with that. Replaced, uh, some secondhand equipment that we'd had, uh, from before. And they did, uh, highlight the use of, uh, the drones, which, uh, the North Liberty PD folks are able to use and they use that for finding a missing, a person. And then we're also helping with the ice, um, water rescue capability. So it was pretty impressive that what they were able to do with it.
Perfect. Good information. Thank you. Anything else?
No, just to add on that Beat the Bitter activities are, are great for North Liberty and even, you know, having other people come to North Liberty for that specifically has been awesome, just to hear their experiences and feedback, so.
For sure it was. Okay, thank you, guys. I appreciate that, uh, that, that additional feedback there. All right, we'll move on to item number 10. And this is, uh, presentation from the Center for Workers' Justice for their wage theft proposal. Maza here, Sally, uh, reached out to us just a couple of weeks ago uh, and asked if she could speak to the group. And I believe we are gonna be their first, uh, presentation here in the community, so. Maza here, it's all yours.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, Mayor, I'm from the, uh, my name is Ms. Sarah. I'm the Executive Director of the Center for Worker Justice. Very thank you very much for giving us the time to come and speak before you. Yeah, we're gonna go ahead and, yes, for the, saving the time, quick presentation about what we do and we're gonna go deep on wage theft. Okay, yes, you want me to go this way? Yeah, okay. Center for Worker Justice, our mission really is to unite low-wage workers and empower them, immigrant and low-wage workers, people of color, and empower them to organize, identify an issue and organize around it so we can make the king that we want, uh, you know, in this, on the city or in our community. Some of the victories since CWJ found back on 2012, uh, by immigrants and low-wage workers, people really completely look different, but they have a lot of, uh, in the common issues. So we start organizing around some issues. One of the very early victories we have is a community ID. Community ID is a non-government ID for the people who cannot obtain a government ID. So we work with the county and, you know, with the cities also. I remember we came here, I spoke a long time ago about this. We want to see the Iowa City and all the city around about the community ID. And this is now for years, the people who cannot identify themselves, uh, before, now they are able to. And this is, will make the community safer. Everybody, we, we organize the community and also is recognized by all the local enforcement in the area, which is really going to make the people who cannot identify themselves easy for them. And we encourage everybody to get it and use it so it will be normalized for the people who need to use it. Uh, minimum wage. So in 2016, we raised the minimum wage. We, with the help of, of the county, to 10-10 and everybody heard about that. We came here also for that. We ask you not to do anything, just recognize. And I think the city of North Liberty did. So, uh, with the, the minimum wage become 10-10, even though the legislature took out, took away the right from the county to raise the minimum wage, but CWJ did not stay silent. We went to the business door to door and asked them to keep paying 10-10. So far, we register over 160 businesses in the area, North Liberty, Iowa City, Corralville. They committed voluntarily to keep paying 10-10 as a minimum wage, which is great. Also CWJ do like some kind of workshop. Uh, for example, for meatpacking workers during the pandemic, we had to do a workshop for them because they're to, to teach them about OSHA and everything on the workplace, how they can protect themselves and all this. And also we have, uh, English as a second language. We do sewing classes for immigrants. We tutor also immigrant children after school tutoring. Uh, University of Iowa student come to their Center for Worker Justice and help immigrant kids do their homework and everything. Because most of the parents who reach out to us, they said that, they really cannot differentiate what the flight from the school, what the homework is because of the language barrier. So we created this program and always led by the student from high school or from the, you know, the University of Iowa. The last amazing program we have, this is just, uh, we created due to the pandemic. It's a program called From My Home to Yours. Because after we, like, hear that there is stimulus check gonna be for everyone, all the Americans, because they lost their job or because of the pandemic, we find out that there is portion of the community, they cannot, they are not eligible for, you know, stimulus check because of their status. So those people really that are the one who left behind without any safety net, we ask all the caring member of the community to donate their stimulus check to the Center for Worker Justice. So if they don't need it, of course, if they are financially not affected. So we receive a lot of donation from caring community members and we start donating this to the people who need it. We just write a check up to $600 to the family and some of them, they get it twice, so during the pandemic. Between, uh, between like caring, you know, community members donation and between organization like, uh, on, on government, we raised $500,000 during the pandemic. And we serve 700 families by helping them pay their rent and utilities and everything. And also right now, this is program, everybody know about IFA, like Iowa Finance Authority help for the rent and utility. We, we have four days a week, which is Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Saturday, for the people just to walk in to the Center for Worker Justice and we help them fill out the application for IFA, for water and for electricity and for the rent. So you know, so far, since the pandemic started with the help of, uh, Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition and the Center for Worker Justice, we helped over 500 members of Johnson County to apply for, you know, the rent and utility from the state. And there is a lot, like, good portion of people who live in North Liberty, they come always there. We have the member from North Liberty that are member. Members that paying the U members. We have identified like last week, 46 members, individual. I mean, I'm not talking about household. Those are members, they live in North Liberty. Those people, we have more, but I cannot identify somebody as a member if they don't pay the dues. But if I list all the people we help, it will be way more than that. Because we don't require to be a member, so we can help you. You know, you can be a member or not, we're still going to help you. Yes, I think now we're gonna go the even way.
Hi, I'm Kaylee. Um, so wage theft, um, this is, you know, it's become a huge issue, especially in Iowa. Um, so when employers steal wages, we help recover the wages that they deserve. Um, since 2013, we have helped recover over $170,000 in wage theft. Um, and we have educated over more than 500 low-wage workers about rights in the workplace. So that's the kind of work that we've been doing. Um, so there's a lot of different types, um, of wage theft cases that we see. Most of the time it's failure to pay overtime or refusal to pay at all. Um, but this can also look like misclassification, um, not paying minimum wage, taking tips. Um, and it's actually a lot more common than a lot of people would think. In a study from 2009, Broken Laws, Unprotected Workers, um, they stated 43.6% of those who they had interviewed experienced wage theft in the prior year. And, sorry. Um, according to the Iowa Policy Project, low-wage workers in Iowa are wrapped of an estimated $600 million per year and that costs Iowa about $60 million per year. So there's a lot of factors that contribute to wage theft. Decline in unions, broken immigration systems, lack of knowledge of workers' rights and that's on the employees and the employer's end. Agency understaffing, and it's kind of a hidden crime. Not many people know about it, so it doesn't get a lot of publicity. So the steps that CWJ takes when someone comes to us about a wage theft case. First, we have them come into the office and we sit down with them and we gather all of the information and evidence we need, whether that's the hours they've worked, if they've written that down or have, uh, pay stubs, um, their wages, if there were any other incidents that occurred while they were working there, and any messages between or emails between the employee and the employer. From there, we call the employer and we try and take a softer approach where we just say we understand that there's misunderstandings sometimes, um, but we'd like to get this figured out as quickly as possible. And oftentimes, that doesn't work. So then that's when we draft a letter using all the evidence that we've gathered. And we list out exactly what they owe the employee, for what reasons. And then at the end of the letter, we state, if we don't hear back from you in the seven days, we will support the employee with whatever further actions they wish to pursue. And that could be filing a complaint with the Department of Labor or, um, filing a civil suit, uh, protests, all sorts of things. We just do whatever the employee wants to do. So this is an example.
Before you go here, but, uh, I just wanna add something. Our goal is not really to, like, make the employer look bad. Our goal is just to recover the wages. If things went smooth, sometimes, yes, a phone call will make it right. Yes, a phone call and say, hey, this is the misunderstanding and can we just sit down with you and figure out? And they would say, yes, come over. And we've got a lot of employers, we never highlight them, that's how it goes. But, uh, sometimes really take us like more than that. And now I guess she, she can tell you like some of the examples for the thing that we get, like, explaining how we split the problem.
Yes, so this was a wage theft case at the IHOP in Corralville. Um, and the employer wasn't complying with our, um, requests to have them pay back the wages that the employee was owed. And it was up to the employee what next steps they wanted to take. And they decided they wanna, they wanted us to help them protest. Um, so that's what we did and it was very successful. And oftentimes, when we deliver the letters to the employers, we form a delegation with community members, city council members, um, other affiliates. And this kind of puts a little bit of public pressure on the employer. And oftentimes, this can, the whole situation can be resolved at this step. So this was an example of a delegation we held, um, at a, a Hispanic restaurant in Iowa City. So the next few are gonna be some examples, whether the employee or lived in North Liberty or, um, the place of business was in North Liberty, where we helped them out. Um, this case, she was a resident of North Liberty and she was misclassified as an independent contractor. So that takes away, um, her right to overtime, workers' compensation, all sorts of different things. And she, yeah, so we formed a delegation and the contractor paid her back $2,346. Jorge was also a resident of North Liberty and he worked at Integrated Living Services for two months. His first paycheck bounced and he filed a complaint with the Department of Labor, who referred him to CWJ. Um, and so we held a delegation and delivered a letter that demanded pay from the employer. And we helped recover $2,065 for Jorge. Carlos worked at the Mexican Grill in North Liberty and he quit because he wasn't getting paid. Um, so we held a delegation and we helped him recover $950. Norma and Wen Ceslow, they worked at Beer Burger in North Liberty. And they were refused pay. And so we delivered a letter and the employer actually gave us a check, but that check bounced. So we asked them what they wanted the next steps to be and they said a protest. And right as we were about to go out and protest, the employer came out and said, no, no, I'll pay in cash. So that was really successful and, uh, we got them both the wages that they were missing. And finally, uh, Samah was a resident of North Liberty and she worked at Anamon Concierge Services. She quit and never received her last paycheck. And so we held a delegation, went and delivered the letter and we helped her recover $850.
Yeah, now our proposal, you know, I send the proposal to all of you. Uh, and I think that, you know, we, we just find out this is not stopping and this is increasing. And we will find a lot of people now just walking out. The only campaign that we have ongoing is wage theft. Like, every month we have a lot of people come and complain about that. And we just start seeing that taking. And we just start seeing that taking a lot of our time from doing also the rest of the stuff that we've been doing. So we would like just to have a person dedicated just to wage theft cases. Not only, uh, you know, just recover that. Educate the community to see like when you pick up your paycheck, what is legal deduction, what is not legal deduction in your paycheck? Do you really have overtime or not have overtime? We have now case that we are working on for 13 years. A woman, she never get overtime, she work every like pay period, she work more than between 85 hours to 90 hours. So she at least she have five hours of overtime in each pay period. For 13 years, she never get paid overtime, but she never knew that she should get paid overtime. She come to us because they did not wait for her the work compensation for the two week that she, uh, you know, she left the job because she was like have like, she was I guess cleaning the exhausted van and she fall down. She had to stay like two week and she came for us for that on her last pay. But we find when by looking at all the base stuff that she bring, it's all she brings 72 base stuff for us. And we look at them and we find out that she never get paid overtime, straight hours. So we advocate and now we are demanding the employer to pay her $19,000 worth of back overtime. And we are working on that right now, hopefully it will be happen. So immigrants and low wage workers, they need to be educated first. If you knew it from day one, you won't, you are not gonna wait 15 years to find out. You can just go ahead and just ask your employer to pay you. But someday because you don't know, then like they won't give you. That's why our community organizer for like for wage theft is not going to be just like recovering. Educate, educate the community, especially for the constructions. A lot of people be being misclassified as independent contractor, even though they work hourly. So we want to educate all the members about this and recovering wage theft. We find out this gonna cost us around $322,000. But of course we're not asking you about that. We went to the, because we know that the county have a lot money from the American Rescue Fund. We went to the county and we asked them. The county said, we're gonna give you 130, but that's not enough. They asked us to give us some ability and we came, uh, we proposed three proposal. One to ICA of 85,000, which is going to be 16,000 every year, 17,000 every year for five year. And we thought we can give you the letter amount, which is 35,000. North Liberty, 7,000 every year for five year. And we, we also sent one to Corleville for 40,000, 8,000 every year for five year. But it's still, we're going to need 42,000 to make that really like the total of 322. We thought if the county saw some cities giving up some money, maybe you can go back to the county again and ask them, hey, we, we have this gap for 42,000 and all the city, you know, given, gives their turn, so can you give us the 42,000 more? That's what we, you know, ask. So we, we are asking you to just give us all this 77 year for five year. So you can contribute to this important issue. Yes, we, we, we just, I'm gonna turn it to Greg, so you can tell it fully all more about that, what we've been doing.
Uh, good evening, my name is Greg Hearn's, um, I'm on the, uh, CWJ Executive Board. And I'm also a president of Iowa City Federation of Labor. As Maza here and Kelly said in the presentation, you know, CWJ has done a lot of good things over the 12 years that we've been established. And there's a lot of groups in this area, in the Johnson County area that do a lot of great things. But you may ask, okay, why do we, why are we asking for the money? Well, the one thing that stands out for CWJ is the wage theft. No other group in this area judge ways, uh, works on wage theft. We get referrals from the Department of Justice or Department of Labor, excuse me. We've done work in Waterloo, from Waterloo all the way down probably to Davenport. I mean, we get referrals from all over because we're the only one that does that work. And, you know, it's important work. When you hear these kind of numbers that they were telling you about, you know, everybody works for a reason, they work to get paid, to pay their bills, take care of their family. And a lot of times these people are already struggling financially, you know, maybe food insecure, maybe trying to, you know, struggling to pay for housing and then they hold their wages back. Now, if an employee went into the business and took some money from the business, they would be arrested. But yet the business can steal from employer, employee and never have any consequences. When we go to these ways to, um, take these delegations to these businesses, you know, we have to follow the rules. They ask us to leave, you know, we can't trespass, we have to stay on the sidewalks, you know. But yet if the police come, they can't address the employer who's actually committing a crime because they're stealing from the employee. So this is why we trying to get laws passed too to make this thing right. I mean, we've talked to legislators. For some reason, no one seems to think this is a problem. I mean, who has $600 million to just piss away? You know, and the reason that we've been able to do these great things because of great collaborations between community groups and also our local elected officials. I mean, they've been just the biggest part, you guys, Iowa City, Corleville, just a bigger part of this thing as we have. You know, it takes a collaboration to solve these kind of problems. So, you know, that's why I'm hoping that you guys consider this. Cause there's gonna be a lot of people that are gonna be hurting if we can't continue to do this work. I mean, we're gonna continue to do this work one way or the other. But it'd be a lot easier if we can hire the people we need and we can do that with the help. Well, Maza here earlier talked about education. Educating the members, but it's not just about educating the members, it's about educating the community as well. I spent almost 40 years in organized labor, yet until I got involved with CWJ, I wasn't aware of this waste of problem. Because in organized labor, someone holds your wages, we have a contract, you have, you could file a grievance, you take it to arbitration. If you're not part of a union, you don't have those, you don't have that support. That's why it's important to us as an ally, Teamsters and all the other unions in the areas that allies to CWJ, to help people that aren't part of unions, you know. We, we already helping the people that are members of our unions and have the right, you know, exercise their right to bargain. But it's the people that are out there with no coverage, um, you know, no protections, no one to turn to when they're screwed. So we're trying to fill that void. I don't know if there was anything else you want me to add to that, but.
Thank you guys very much. We'd like to have an opportunity to ask some questions now for you, appreciate you guys, uh, presenting, so. I think they're just in listen mode if I'm not, are they listening?
Did you, did the person on the phone have anything to add or would they just listen?
I think you want to add something because he's like for the finance committee of the region.
Okay, could I just ask that we make this brief? It's, um, it's been 20 minutes already, so yeah, give us an opportunity, I'd appreciate that, thank you. Go right ahead.
Right, right, yeah, I think, I think it's important to have discussion of this. Um, my name is Shelton Stromquist, um, I live in Iowa City. Uh, I've been working with CWJ for a number of years as a volunteer and I'm chair of the Finance Committee. Um, I wish I could be there with you tonight, unfortunately I'm home quarantined with COVID. So, um, this is the best I can do. But I, I wanted to just say briefly a couple of things about why support for this program makes particular sense in the context of the pandemic and with the use of ARPA funds. Um, you know, wage theft that, as you've heard from the other speakers, is a problem that's been with us for a while. But it's also a problem that in all kinds of ways appears to be deepening, uh, during the pandemic. Um, and that what we're seeing is unfortunately probably just the tip of the iceberg. Uh, we have a more casualized and contingent employment market, labor market, uh, growing use of subcontractors, employers who've been hard pressed and who unfortunately at times are tempted to hard press their employees in order to get themselves back on their feet. And so, um, wage theft is a, is obviously a problem for the workers whose wages have been denied them. But it's also a problem for the local economy and for employers who are responsible to their employees. So it seems to me that in terms of promoting overall economic health in North Liberty and in Johnson County, it's really critical that this issue we direct, address directly, that it be brought into the light of day. But it's just not fair for workers who can have some legal labor, to work hard, to go home expecting to get their pay and then to find that they're being shortchanged. Um, this is not the kind of community here, it's not the local community we want. And these aren't the kind of local employers that we expect to have among us. So I think, you know, we need to, we need to build what I like to call a fair labor community. A community that has a reputation of being fair to its employees. Um, and, um, and the goal ultimately is a goal that's gonna benefit the whole community and the whole economy. It's gonna do North Liberty well to be recognized as a place where workers are treated fairly. So I think this is an absolutely perfect use for ARPA funds to try to address and reverse this, this ongoing problem. And it's gonna take some sustained effort. It's gonna take outreach, it's gonna take making connections with other community organizations. And it's gonna take upholding those employers who are doing a good job, but also, um, you know, sanctioning those who, uh, who are not doing fairly by their employees. Um, so I would encourage you, um, to, to join in this effort, which other municipalities and the county, uh, are getting behind. And, uh, let's, let's deal with this problem and let's, let's not make it a part of our local economic life and culture. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelton. All right, I'm gonna ask these guys if they've got some questions for you and, and, uh, take it from there. So I'm gonna turn it over to you guys and.
I'll start. I don't necessarily have a question because I'm very familiar with the work you all do. And I do think it's important, um, just to one, work with individuals or know that low, low wage, um, families are getting stripped of funds that obviously they need. This is a hard time for everyone and even before, um, knowing that the living wage hasn't increased, um, but the cost of living continues to. So I think the work that you all do is very important. Um, you are educating also on what to look for on a pay stub and making sure that everything is where it needs to be. And a lot of people who have, you know, good sustainable jobs may not even have that, um, bit of education. So you're going above and beyond, um, educating our community across the board, the whole county, so, and outside the county. Um, and to know that the number is very high in terms of residents that, you know, are employed in our community or live in the community as well. So, um, thank you is all I have to say is thank you and continue to do the work. Um, and I definitely support, um, you all's efforts.
Thanks, Keisha.
So I guess typically with requests like this, I, I tend to shy away from, um, being in favor of funds that fund strictly, uh, wages, uh, for staff members or, or an increase in staff. However, um, with your, uh, sharing of the families that were helped in North Liberty, return on investment for our citizens is very important. Uh, and you, you showed that tonight, uh, in the, uh, the folks that you have helped here. With the ARPA funds, we're in a unique situation where these are one-time funds. Um, we have, uh, a, a number of years to utilize them, you know, we don't have to come, uh, you know, uh, shooting out of the gate and, and, and figure everything out from the beginning. I, I think that, um, folks that are out working hard to support their families, uh, this, to me, this is not, um, this is not a giveaway, this is not, um, this is supporting folks that are out working. It's, it, it's not the opposite. Um, it, it's not a giveaway, uh, it, it's not supporting, uh, folks to, uh, you know, not go out and, uh, and work and support their families, that's what these folks are doing. Uh, Ryan, I have a question. With the ARPA funds, they must be spent by 2026?
December 31st, 2026.
Okay, so with a five-year ask, those funds could be put away.
The, I think the, the, the first four years, if I'm doing my calculation here, it would be no problem. And then the fifth year, we probably have to find a different source of revenue to fund that $7,000. I'm not 100% clear that just by giving it to an organization, whatever it may be, in this case, it would be CWJ, prior to that 26, if they're not gonna spend it, I'm not sure how that works. That's something we have to look into a little bit.
Sure.
So I think the, the most conservative approach of, of an approach right now would be that $7,000 in year five would have to come from a different source.
Sure. So I'll end with saying, if, if that, if that is the case where a fifth year has to be, uh, taken up, uh, this is, this is not a, an unrealistic or over the top ask that we typically see with our, uh, funding requests every year from, uh, social service agencies that come to us. Uh, so those are my thoughts, um, and I'll, I'll leave it with that.
Brent, yeah, sorry.
So I agree with Brent, um, I've never really been in favor of using money to fund positions. And I think last year we did the same thing when we were working on something else and stuff. And I would much rather see somebody come and, uh, talk to the city attorney and work out a program for, uh, participating in, uh, working out, uh, working out a, a program, $435,000. And then, uh, you can have a, you know, a program that meets Grant's requirements that would be targeted towards protecting the wages of North Liberty residents. And then I would just do that as a one-time thing and then, you know, how fast you spend it, that would be up to you and then we don't have to worry about anything.
Can you say that again? Brian, can you go to your, your approach?
I would just have them make, instead of saying, hey, I wanna pay for a position, I'd rather have them say, hey, we would, we have a problem here, which is wage theft and worker rights and stuff. And we want to develop a program for that and we would like you to contribute $35,000. And then we would just take that out of the ARPA money now. And they just have to do it on like the forms that Grant worked out before. Because, you know, they're very tricky.
Oh, I got you.
And then I would just do it once and then however, you guys, we would trust you then to say, hey, this is what our contribution we expected to use it for. And you guys could divvy up your finance person however you need to. And then you don't have to worry about.
Yep, I got you, thank you. Eric?
I actually have a question for you. I, sadly, I don't think this problem is gonna go away. And I expect that you'll want to continue this position after five years. Um, what are your plans for funding that?
Yeah, we, we just find that so we can have enough time to, you know, just figure out another organization. And in fact, as a CCHD, like campaign for human development, they used to give us 60,000 every year and for staff, this is for operation. And, but we had it for seven years in a row. They said we cannot have it until like we stay, we have to go three years. And after that, they're gonna give us a hit. That's one of the thing we really like waiting for it. We're gonna stay three years without that fund, but after three year, we're gonna have that fund like regularly for another seven years. So that's what my plan is really when it come to funding this. But it's still, we are in process of hiring crown writer, so we can look for foundation who really going to fund this kind of work too. So we, five year would give us a lot of time to think about how we can continue with the fund, with, with the hiring person.
Thank you.
I, I do have one, one more question. So in addition to you all requesting funds from us and from the county and the other municipalities, a portion of this is to cover wages for a worker, right? And then the rest is to help with wage theft. Am I, okay.
Perfect. Well, I think what I heard was consensus to assist you guys. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Eric wasn't done.
Oh, I, I just, you know, I appreciate what you said, Brian, and, um, I don't, I don't see that as, I don't see North Liberty doing a separate program as something that's, that's, you know, it's not cooperation with the rest of the county.
I think we have to just kind of make it say that.
What's that?
I think we have to make it kind of say that that's a goal. I think we have to make it kind of, say that that's a goal of North Liberty City Council, and how they, our goal is to work with people.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I understand that part, so.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, we just kind of have to say that it's our goal is to, for you to do that.
Yeah. So I, I just want to say, I think I, I fully support your program, and I'm, I'm very much in favor of it.
Yeah, and, and so, yeah, so you have consensus up here that we will be of support to your program? What we need to iron out is the, the hows and the whens, um, for this, so. We leave it at that for you guys tonight, and thank you so much for what you are doing and, uh, for taking the time to be here at our meeting tonight, and I hope you have success in the future meetings that you have as well. You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
You guys, thanks for that. I know that this was more time than we probably thought we would need to spend on this, but it's a worthwhile conversation. So are we okay? We work out some of these details after the fact, or is there anything you want to add to it here?
I just think that, uh, Grant and I will sit down and talk about this a bit more, and then we'll reach out to the, um, Center for Worker Justice, and, and we'll bring back something to you folks that I think we, I think we understand where everyone's at here.
Okay.
And you'll have an opportunity to vote on that, then.
That sounds great.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. Okay. Thank you all again. Uh, we'll move on to item number 11, which is the city administration campus update. Natalie, is that right? No?
Yes, thank you.
Natalie appeared tonight. If you haven't met Natalie yet, this is Natalie Openall, project architect on this. Uh, she works directly with Tandy. She's been through the whole process, through concept, all the way through DDs. So tonight, what we want to do is give you an update process, what's happened since June, when we presented the concept plan to, uh, oh, to today. So since June, we've added two smittles. Uh, we went through the concept stage, and then we went through schematic design, which is about 20% of design. And we met the staff and discussed all that. And then we went on to the, the design development phase, which is about 60% complete, and that was submitted in December. So good design is really important, but equally is the process. And for me, it's really important, uh, for managing the project, the scope, the schedule, the costs, and the owner expectations. So what we do is we pause at all these milestones and then decide if changes need to be made. So that is, but that's our schedule, so that's been revised, uh, about 14 times so far. But the important dates are still the same. I'll rename myself. It's the construction. So the, the whole plan is to bid this in September, start construction in October, and then substantial completion in March of 2024. So that's all getting ready for a, uh, a move-in date of, uh, drop dead, June 30th of 2024, because that's when the lease runs out of this building. And then next is cost. So the, can't read that very well.
This, this graph is in the...
It's in our packet.
You guys have a copy of that. So the first column, that's the concept phase cost of, uh, a total project budget of nine million. We, uh, during the process of the design, we discussed with Tracy and Ryan that, um, we really wanted to hire a cost estimator, Stecker Harmsen, they're out of Des Moines. They're, they're known, uh, widely throughout the state. They've done a lot of projects for us, uh, school district, uh, university, UIC, et cetera. They're kind of renowned throughout the state for their cost estimating. So we gave them the DD set, and we decided that that's probably the best set to give them, because it's far enough along, they've got enough detail to do some good takeoffs, but not too much, uh, design completed, so it would be hard to make changes. So that was the thought process, and we're glad we did it, because December 31st, they gave us their estimate, and it was about $2 million higher than the original budget, so it was about 11 million. We had a chance to review that. We, we found some things that were just weren't right, that they included some things that were already accounted for. So it was actually about 10.7, but it's still 1.7 million higher, or about 19%. So I did call them and talk to them about that. Basically, they said, uh, you know, conditions are just not rosy right now for building projects. Uh, in 2021, it was, uh, inflation, uh, supply chain, and workforce issues. And it's been driving up costs from June through December. And then in addition to that, you know, they don't see this slowing down in the short term. So inflation and those other issues can still happen through, throughout this year. So they added on another 7% or, uh, $590,000 for additional escalation between January 1 and September bid day. So, um, I also asked them if they saw anything in the drawings that looked, um, different, maybe too costly in their eyes, and they really didn't see anything. And they, um, you know, they've got no reason to expect this to get better in the short term. It's the first time they've ever added a, an escalation factor of 7% onto an, an estimate. So this is kind of challenging times. I should mention that it, it's not affecting our other civil projects all that much, the roadway projects, because a lot of that is dirt, gravel, cement, um, but it is really affecting the, the building projects. Next, we met with Ryan and Tracy, and we talked about ways to get back to our target 9 million. And we looked at about 50 different items. And unfortunately, there doesn't appear to be a real feasible way to meet that original $9 million budget without taking away significantly from the building or the programming. But with some changes, and that's what we're showing in this third column, the value engineered project cost, we think we can get it down to 9 point, or, yeah, 9.9 million, uh, which is still about 10% higher. And it's hard for me to describe the changes, because I think when we presented the concept, there wasn't any design yet. So the things that were changed were actually things that we started to design in SDs and then changed that, or were looking to change them at the end of DDs. For example, the, the generator, we were planning on a 300 kilowatt generator. Now we're looking at a 100 kilowatt generator. Making some changes to some of the materials. The, uh, a change to the roof height in the second-story open office area, uh, some piping changes. But the main change, uh, would, would have the most cost, um, effect is the outdoor plaza. And we think we can save quite a bit of money, about 750,000, uh, if you're totally removed all the landscaping in the event plaza. But what, what we propose to do is have three different versions. So in the base bid, we'd have a very minimal landscape plaza. And then we'd have an alternate bid for kind of a middle-of-the-road landscaping plaza, and then the full build-out. So, um, that's what we're recommending, is to, uh, we think that'll allow the most flexibility in awarding a bid and hoping for the best and planning for the worst. Now, I think I'll let Natalie show you some images and talk about the building.
Yeah, so during the DD process, essentially, I just wanted to show you how the, the floor plan does continue to develop. We've started to kind of close in on how the spaces are really going to be used and, and how people are really going to be sitting in those spaces and, and what they look like. And as far as the building is concerned, this is very similar to what we had in our last presentation as far as the room types, room sizes, things like that. Again, we were able to kind of hold on to all of those within the cost estimate, um, that we're presenting tonight. This image kind of shows the difference between the three levels of the exterior plaza that we're proposing. So the base bid would be the image on the left, um, which would essentially be made up of your, you know, typical sidewalks. All of the pavement would be concrete. We would be paring back, um, a good bit of the landscaping, things like that. We're not showing the parking lot, because we would still maintain all of the landscaping in the parking lot, um, just because of, you know, different city requirements and things like that. So we're not modifying that at all. The middle-of-the-road option, which we're calling alternate bid one, is the middle image. And that shows that we would continue to use those pavers that we've used elsewhere in the city, kind of around the building. Um, and then we would switch to concrete sidewalks as we got a little further away from the building. Then we would still have a pretty open lawn space out to that side. But where the bid is delineated, it would allow you to further build out to the full plaza space in the future, should we not be able to accept both alternate, or all the way out to alternate two. Alternate bid two is the full build-out. That includes the entire plaza, um, where we could have our food trucks and things like that that could then utilize the space near the community room and things like that. So as far as the aesthetic is concerned, the, the visual aspect of it hasn't changed a whole lot. We do have this still, I wanted to... I've got a few other images that I would like to...
We should email you though?
Yep. That we can just kind of walk through here. So this is, again, this is a full rendering from above, so that you can see the, the parking lot. Um, we haven't modified any of the, the landscaping over there, that, that remains the same. This is showing alternate bid one, so we are really hoping to be able to accept that alternate bid one. Um, and so that's what you're seeing in these various renderings. This is one closer to a sidewalk level, again, looking at that community plaza and how that would look with alternate bid one accepted. Um, you can also see here the clearer story of windows at the second-floor open office space was brought down to level that second-floor roof. That allowed us to save a pretty significant amount of money regarding structure. Um, we didn't, it doesn't necessarily remove a whole lot of, um, daylight up there. We still have that whole southern face of windows, um, that I'll show you here in just a second. Again, the north side doesn't, whoa, 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 calm down. We still have the community, you know, the, a bit of a plaza space underneath the canopy, kind of the view from the protected area there. Here you can see the potential, um, next phase outlined in the white outline there. Uh, you can also see that we, we are keeping the pop-out of those windows on that south side, to focus on that daylight on that second floor. But we did flatten the clearer story down. Again, once you get down here closer to the, um, second police station access, uh, we just go down to lawn space in that alternate bid one. Again, another image kind of as you're walking down the sidewalk there. Um, this shows that we're still trying to protect that, um, staff break area, um, right outside, so that they've got, um, a little bit of screening from that street. Whereas in the full build-out option, there's, um, a metal screen wall that goes along there. We still want to try to preserve some of that landscaping in the, uh, alternate. And then this is essentially your, your view kind of as you approach the building from the parking lot, uh, to go inside. So we do have, one more thing I wanted to show everybody tonight is a couple of video clips. So here you can see how the, um, city hall actually relates to the police station and where the parking lot sits and how the landscaping actually interfaces with the police station as well. Again, showing alternate bid one as we kind of round the corner here. Our next video will continue us, um, around towards the south end. We can see that plaza area, uh, the lawn, the outline for the, uh, future addition. Um, we can start to see the transformer and the generator pads on the, on the backside here. Um, this view kind of gets us back down to a human level as we walk along the sidewalk across the street. And then our last one here will take us around, um, the west side of the building, the approach from the parking lot, um, as well as the primary staff entrance. Uh, again, you can see the clearer story and how that's been reduced on that second floor, and the impact that it's had. And that's what we have. Any questions, comments?
I figured you might have the most questions. This is kind of the first time you've seen this.
I guess my, my main questions are about, what... The estimator said that they don't see the inflation problem or the other problems slowing down anytime soon. Are we getting any, any, um, any idea of when they think things might settle down?
Not really. You know, they use the number of 7%, you know, it's, it's kind of a guess on their part.
And that's between now and September?
Yeah, yes, yeah, and, um...
Which is a little closer to what we see in an average year. It, it's closer to that. You know, for example, the third quarter of last year, we thought 20%. That's where the big jump came from, that it's just kind of like, how do you plan for that? Um, so there, I mean, they're a typical number that they would use for any sort of inflation is closer to four, four or five, somewhere around there, but they just don't know.
For a year.
For a year.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, they, they also, they think, you know, the, the inflation will eventually taper off, but it's probably not going to bring prices down. It'll probably level off, and then, unless we have some sort of an economic downturn to, to drive them down, they'll probably just hang out up on top. Um, you know, we also did talk to them about, well, we, we thought internally, well, should we try to bid this thing sooner and save on some inflation? But the problem is we can't, because we have to rely on the Dubuque Street Phase One project, move that street, which is the first phase of that project, and have it ready for this contractor to work in October. So if we tried to bid the thing in May to save a few months of inflation, the contractors bidding on it are going to have to pad their numbers for the equipment and stuff that they're purchasing in October. So that, that was, uh, discussed briefly, but it's not going to work. I can say that, um, there's contingency built into this current 9.9 million dollar budget. Like Natalie mentioned, it does include the, the middle-scale, um, landscaping plaza. So we're, we're hoping and targeting for a, a base bid amount of $8 million in September. And if we get a bid right around there, then we'll be able to award alternate number one and still have, um, about a $400,000 contingency left for construction, for unknowns during construction and change orders, because that's going to happen with a big building project, so. So there's a number of contingencies, and, you know, I mentioned what we're, what we're trying to do is plan for the worst but hope for the best. And I think by, by doing this, by, by including the bare bones landscaping in the base bid, and including the alternate number one for some upgraded landscaping and hardscaping, and then also including the design for the full, that's the best flexibility for the, for the city. Wait until September?
And based on what you're saying, I mean, it doesn't make any sense to, to wait past September to do the bidding. And, and I, I know we're, the time crunch is there, um, but there are at least a few months... And I know where the time crunch is there, but there are at least a few months maybe that we have cushion between the the substantial completion and drop dead date, but it doesn't probably make any sense to wait.
Probably not. You know, it's, we think it's a really fair construction schedule because they're allowed to start in October of 2022 and not have to be done until March, April of 2024. That's a pretty good timeframe, which hopefully will be attractive to bidders. And then we're also hoping that the bidding, the local bidding climate is really good here later this year. Yeah, there's a lot of factors.
Yeah, it's the truth. Do you guys have any other questions?
We are, I guess we're really happy. Happy that the estimate came back so high, but we're happy that we caught it at this stage so that we can come up with a plan, change some things around that we needed and still try to deliver at least the majority of what you saw originally. We're we're really sad if we're not going to be able to award alternate number two because we really want that. We at least want alternate number one.
Was that decision making from some of the lessons we learned from PD? Because there's a lot of contingencies. There was the underground tank issues. There was the delays. There was the cutting that the chief had to do late in the project.
Yeah, we, well, if you remember correctly, that that bid came in a lot higher than we anticipated, and so we had to cut right from the get go. The, we're hopeful that what we find underground will be limited because a lot of that's already been been dug up, you know. But to Kevin's point, I mean, we we see in every project, you just don't know what you're gonna you're gonna get. And from a, if I could just jump into how how would we pay for this, as I tried to explain in the memo, obviously, the city council has the authority to borrow the $9 million, which is our original intent. We have $300,000 that we set aside with our FY20 surplus that we started to use for design right away. We have the potential to allocate another 300,000 with our FY21 surplus that we'll be talking about here in the coming weeks. And then we're actually meeting tomorrow to talk a little bit more about the stormwater grant that we're hopefully going to submit here, also within the coming weeks or days to the state, somewhere around $300,000. And that's certainly not a guarantee. But we're hopeful that there's a potential there. So that's, that's how we would propose to make this work.
Anything else for the witnesses?
Mayor, I would just say with the phased approach, we we've taken the phased approach with Centennial Park as well. And it's been a long time.
Yeah, I was thinking about that while they were talking. Yes.
It's been a struggle because we keep coming back and we 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 make commitments and it's 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 a beautiful space. It's a beautiful park. You know, we we had a lot of, a lot of discussions up here growing fans of getting infrastructure in the ground. It's not sexy to put pipes in the in the ground at $700,000, but it had to be done just to get a roadway before we could start putting the the stuff above that people could start using. And I, you know, we crystal ball, but if if we phase that outside, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's going to have to be a game day decision because if we phase them, you know, it'll be an expense later down the road that won't be the same expense as it is today. It'll be more expensive then. So there will be some some conversation for us to have. But that was exactly what I was thinking when they were talking about that.
And to give you a little peace of mind, because it would be that second and third piece of the plaza would be at alternates, as Chris just said, as the mayor just said, you can make that decision when we bring the bids in. And if things are looking pretty good, we need to stretch a few more dollars, we can look at potentially doing both. I mean, it will be a game time decision. We'll have we'll have that option when we get a little closer. Appreciate that comment.
Anything else, you guys? Natalie, thanks for joining us tonight. Kevin?
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Item 13 is the community center facility plan. I read the resolution, get this thing started. You guys jump in? That sound okay?
You bet.
Okay. Resolution number 2022-10 is a resolution approving the services agreement between the City of North Liberty and Shive Hattery, Inc. for the community center facility plan. And just so we can get this conversation going, could we just get a motion to start this and get it out there?
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Okay.
Okay, thanks. This is an attempt to be able to better plan for this aging facility. You have noticed over the couple of years, we've had some significant investment in there with the with initially the HVAC project, which we we actually originally called it the Dectron unit that we replaced for the indoor pool. And the pool heaters needed to be replaced. Prior to those two projects, we were working on some boiler replacements. And it seemed that when we would put money aside, something else would pop up within that project that needed attention. It didn't meet code or it wasn't good for the building. So what we're asking Shive Hattery to do is just take a comprehensive look at at this facility as a whole, point out our weaknesses, where you see improvements down the road so that we can get some of these more significant projects into a capital improvement plan and start planning for them now. So just trying to be a little proactive here. Much like our water and wastewater facility plans, we would have a community center facility plan much less expensive than the water and sewer piece. So that's where we're at.
Right. Do you guys have some questions or anything about it? I generally think it's a good idea to know where we are and to dig into this.
It is. I just think sometimes we we can over consult ourselves to death. I mean, we pay consultants to tell consultants to write a report to a consultant to tell Ryan that something's going to break in five years and that's an overexaggeration, of course. I, you know, I don't think 23 is over the top. You know, when I go to North Liberty Auto and they look at my vehicle, they come back with a an assessment and they say, okay, here's here's red line items you should probably fix. Your power steering pump is linking all over our floor. We should probably fix that today. Your tires are, you know, wearing down a little bit. You should probably look at replacing that and before the snow flies and and other things. So, you know, if they can prioritize those, and I'm guessing they they could, but if we can make that request of what they're seeing in a 12-month replacement, this has got to be done now. Safety issues, of course, ADA access, those types of things. And then scale it out, you know, over a five-year period. If we're going to spend the money, let's get our money's worth so it's not just a list of things that, you know, is an immediate fix or we need to do in the next two years. And then it, does that make sense?
It does. And this this would be the long-term approach here.
Okay.
So that, you know, let me give you an example, a couple of them, but I'll start with one. The heater project is one that just drove me nuts because, you know, we had an estimate and, you know, it was just to replace the heater and the unit was $70,000. Well, it's all fine and dandy, but then when you get in there and look at everything around it and the code, I mean, at that point, we found out that when it was constructed, it wasn't to the to the proper code, you know. And so those are the types of things that $70,000 project turned into a half million dollar project. Those are the things I'm trying to, that we're trying to get a hold of so they don't pop up and surprise us.
I appreciate that. I guess one question I have is when will we see something in front of us as a result of this plan? I mean, I guess when will we see the plan is what I'm asking.
Yeah, right. We we actually, we haven't put together a schedule with Shelley and her team yet. That would be step one. Is to meet with Shelley and then put together a schedule. I would guess in the next few months, but I can't give you a date. You know, it's going to involve a mechanical engineer going into each space in the library, the rec center, the pool, same way with an architect and electrical engineer, and then we'll have a civil engineer on site. So it it is fairly time consuming.
And my request will be, believe it or not, we'll be talking about budget again in a few months to have this ready so that when we just just start our budget discussions at the staff level in September, October, we have this report to.
That that's what I was hoping. I just want to make sure.
Sorry, I wasn't clear on that.
Great question. Okay, so we've got a motion. It's been seconded. I guess we just need a roll call, Tracy.
Sittig.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 14 is the community center pool replacement project. I'll do the same thing with this one if you don't mind, you guys. Resolution number 2022-11 is a resolution approving the service agreement between the City of North Liberty and Shive Hattery for the community center roof replacement project. And just like last time, could I just get a motion to open this up?
I'll move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Okay. Back to you, Ryan.
Okay. In this case, we've had some damage on that roof and we are it needs to be replaced. We've made some immediate or urgent type repairs to to secure it. We're working closely with our insurance company. I'll note that the Shive Hattery employee we're working with used to be an insurance adjuster, and that has turned out to be extremely beneficial in our in helping us navigate that process with the insurance company. So we really need to move ahead with this so we can get that roof replaced and anticipate the bulk of this expense being covered by our insurance company.
Pretty straightforward. Insurance claim, help. You guys have any questions on this one? All right. Tracy, you got a roll call, please.
Carrington.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Item 15 is the Watts rezoning. And this is our second consideration of ordinance number 2022-01. An ordinance amending chapter 167 of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances by amending the use regulations on property located on the south side of Dennison Avenue, approximately 130 feet east of Brookridge Avenue, located in North Liberty, Iowa, to those set forth in the municipal code for the RD 10 two-unit residence district. Can I have a motion for this one, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Eric.
I'll second.
Thanks, Brian. Been moved and seconded. You guys have any questions about this one second time around? Okay. Tracy, roll call, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item 16 is the our zoning code. Again, this is a second consideration of ordinance number 2022-02, an ordinance amending chapters 165 through 170 and 173 of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances governing the administration, organization, enforcement, and definitions of zoning districts, development, and sign regulations. Could I have a motion for this one, please?
So move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded.
Mayor?
Yes.
We do, there was a brief update in the memo talking about a small change we'd like to make to this. We were hoping the council would consider a amendment to this ordinance. And Russ, do you want to take this or grant? Kind of explain what's.
Yeah, I can take it. So we were working with Green State as far as their permitting. I came to realize they, if you can picture their building, they have a 300 square foot Green State sign on the front, which meets current code. They would like to have a similar sign kind of come together on the the west elevation facing 380. Because of how our code is written, it limits them to 240 square feet because it's three square feet for every lineal foot of building wall that the sign would be attached to. Thought about it a little bit. When you have buildings to the scale of that much, staff did feel it was appropriate to have a little bit larger signage allotment. With that being said, we capped it at 400 to so somebody didn't have a, you know, a thousand square foot sign up there. And so it would apply only to two-four-story buildings in the Office Research Park, as well as the new C3 district that we're working on. So this was a catch, and this sometimes happens, that it was like, well, we we have a potential solution for a fix to that. While Green State was the obvious conversation here, it would be applicable to all four-story buildings in the city of North Liberty.
Good use of these two weeks since the last time we read this out loud.
But specific to that zoning.
Yes, so it'd be the Office Research Park and and the new re-envisioned C3 district, both of those districts. Other than that, our districts really don't allow for that kind of building height. So you're you're really thinking about those larger commercial spaces.
Good, good clarification on that, Brian.
So do we need to make a motion?
Yeah, so let's make, we need to get this amendment in there first. So can I get a motion for that amendment to be added?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do you guys have any other questions about the amendment that Russ would like to add in here?
Do you have the wording you need, Grant?
I do, and and I've worked with Russ on this. Like he's, it's it's just like he said, only in a limited area and four feet per lineal, four square feet per lineal foot, as opposed to three square feet per lineal foot. Only if you're on the, only for four-story buildings and only on the fourth story. It's that's, it's it's pretty pretty well limited. So I I support it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just procedurally, are we okay with the way this has gone?
Yeah, we, there's a, there's a motion right now which is pending and then which is the the second reading, the ordinance. A second motion now is to amend the ordinance to conform with staff's recommendation is how I'm interpreting that. You would need then a roll call to amend, to to approve the amended motion. And then a second, and then a second roll call to to close the second reading. And I think that's it.
All right, let's, Tracy, can we do a roll call on the amendment, please?
Yes. Sittig.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
The amendment is added in there. Russ, thanks for doing that. And back to the original motion. Any other comments? Questions on that one? Okay, Tracy, we've got a motion on the floor for that one. So can we have a roll call, please?
Smith.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Terrific. Thank you all. Item 17 is our rental code, second consideration of ordinance number 2022-03. An ordinance amending chapter 146 of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances governing rental housing procedures and regulations and structure procedure requirements. Can I have a motion for this one, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions since last time? Hearing none. Tracy, a roll call, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all. And item 18, the city rezonings, second consideration of ordinance number 2022-04. An ordinance amending zoning on various properties in the city of North Liberty, Iowa. Can I have a motion for that one, too, please?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions on that? Okay. Tracy, roll call, please.
Harrington.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we're rounding the corner here. Any items for old business? Good productive start to the meeting. Anything else? Okay, I'll move on. New business? I like.
I will just say, and I probably should have made this part of my council report, I guess, maybe. You all know that I'm on the board of the North Liberty Pantry and the pantry is in dire need of volunteers. So if anyone out there, if anyone's watching, but there's on-the-job training and available and if you have a few extra hours, it's a great way to spend those hours because it's it's a fulfilling thing to do. But I just urge everyone to to take an opportunity to do that.
Counselor, are there days that need more?
During the week, I mean, all of our shifts are, a lot of our shifts are are in need of volunteers at this point. You know, pantry opened a clothing closet last summer and we, they haven't been able to have that open all the time because there just aren't enough volunteers. So I'm not sure I would urge anyone to get in touch with pantry staff to, or look at the website to see when those those times are available.
Thank you, Eric. Anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Ryan, you asked me to have a. We are adjourned. Ryan, you asked me to have a.